Someone called a meeting to order. As just mentioned, just a reminder everyone that the meeting is being recorded and will be posted to YouTube within the next few days. With that, we'll move to the, oh, before we get started with the agenda, I want to announce that there were two executive sessions, one on October 20th, one on October 29th, to discuss personnel issues within the Police Department. With that, we'll move to the agenda. First item is the approval of the minutes from the October 14th, 2020 where the supervisors.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 14th, 2020.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? If, as a reminder, you can either type in a chat box that you have a comment or you can speak up at the moment we indicate. If there's no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion passes. Move to the reports. First up, the Chief Alexander, the Police Department.
Thank you and good evening. For the month of October 2020, the Police Department officers documented 993 incidents in the Police Department call reporting system. I was able to identify 509 of those entries as incidents wherein someone was specifically requesting the services of the Police Department. During the month, the officers issued 97 traffic citations. They investigated 32 traffic crashes and they arrested 11 individuals. Additionally, for the month of October, the department members conducted three motor carrier details at the waystation, resulting in 896 trucks being weighed, three of which were found to be overweight. In addition to that, 12 federal motor carrier inspections were performed, resulting in numerous violations to include two trucks being placed out of service. The traffic officers also conducted three additional inspections during their normal daily duties outside of the waystation. Year to date, the officers have weighed 6,013 trucks, finding 42 of them to be overweight. They've completed 105 inspections at the detail and of course, they did three additional this month on their regular duties. They have placed 25 trucks out of service year to date and eight of their drivers. Additionally, the officers have issued 1,104 traffic citations. They've written 216 written warnings. They've arrested 122 individuals. And so far, the officers have documented 10,829 calls in the call reporting system.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Maybe Kim? Can I get a motion to accept them? Oh wait, you do that again, sorry. We'll move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you. Through the month of October in the General Fund, we have collected just a little over 84% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just a little over 80% of our budgeted expenditures.
Thank you. Public Works?
Yes, for the month of October, the daily average flow to the the Downingtown area regional treatment facility was 1.28 million gallons per day and there were no new connections to the Dara system. The township received 3.83 inches of rain for the month of October, putting this at about 52.6 inches of rain for the year, which is about 14 inches over normal. The Public Works Department was out ahead of these storms to clean catch basins in our problem areas and culverts as well. The department was also out at Martin Farm Park to finish topsoil work over a new stormwater pipe that was installed at Martin Farm Park. Repairs were made to catch basins on Clydesdale Quail and Mill Pond. The department also assisted in the removal of dirt as part of a match for a stormwater project that's going on in front or has just been recently completed in front of the Medical Arts Building on Route 100. The department also completed tree cutting in the area of Spring Run. And I also wanted to give just a quick update on the Norwood Road culvert replacement project. I know it's kind of looked like there have not, has not been progress being made there, but the township did run into a sewer issue with a sewer line that runs under the culvert. That has been resolved and this project is moving forward. Right now, we are giving it a target date of the end of the month, but we're hoping that it's sooner than that.
Thank you. Fire Marshall?
Yes, for the month of October, the Building Department issued 136 permits for construction activities. We had 112 inspections that were conducted. 30 use and occupancy certificates were issued and there were 13 fire responses for the month.
And the Fire Company, the line of fire?
Yes, the Line of Fire Company responded to 48 calls for service in the month of October. Of those 48, 30 were in Euclid, six were in Upper Euclid, four in West Pikeland and eight in other towns.
And then the Euclid ambulance?
I thought I saw Mr. Baxter.
Yeah, I think he's on.
Just give him a second. Extra loud.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, he's trying to talk, but and he's off mute.
Right.
Okay, well, should we just move, move on? Unless, uh?
Or can he type it in the chat or is that too much? Can he call in? He can call in also. Or we can come back to it?
Yeah, I think if we come back to the connection. So can you get a motion to accept the reports?
I'll make a motion to accept the reports as presented.
I second that.
Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Move to the, the presentation of the 2021 draft budget. Scott, turns to you.
One second, I'm gonna pull the PowerPoint here. It's actually kind of interesting. I was thinking today as we were preparing for the presentation of the 2021 budget. I had flashbacks to the presentation of the 2020 budget and it kind of set the tone for just how much can change in a single year, which we'll, we'll get into as we go through the budget, but I am pleased tonight to present the draft 2021 bu- budget. Obviously, this, this year has presented some, some challenges in the form of the COVID-19 pandemic. However, I do think that the township has continued to navigate this, this pandemic well and is emerging into 2021 fiscally strong. So basically what I want to do real quick is just kind of give an introduction to the, the process for this year. The township did utilize new budgeting software from Questica. Thank you Sue Bernhardt, our Finance Director, for kind of taking the lead on that. It has really kind of transformed the way that we have traditionally done our budget. It has given the ability to kind of do all of this work in the cloud, which has made it much easier for our department heads to be more immersed in the budget for their own departments as we move forward. Just some background information before we get too far. The, tonight, we will have the bu- budget presentation following this evening's meeting. The budget will be posted to the website and there will also be a copy of the budget available in the Township Administration Lobby. It'll also be advertised accordingly. We expect the budget to be on the agenda for December 14th for formal consideration by the board. So there is, there is time following this, this meeting this evening, this presentation this evening to review the official document. So quickly, I just wanted to touch on the five main funds of our budget here at Euclid Township. We have the, the General Fund, which is the main operating fund and used for primarily, mostly for the transit, transactions you see at the township. The hydrant fund is actually a fund that assesses homeowners that are within 600 feet of a fire hydrant. This is to help offset the cost of the standby fee that Aqua charges for water for those hydrants. I'll get into that a little more detail later in the presentation. The sewer fund focuses on our sewer rental tapping and other fees that are collected to help maintain the infrastructure of our sewer system. The capital improvement fund is a fund that's financed through transfers from our General Fund, similar to what we had seen earlier in this year. That helps pay for our capital costs. And then finally, we have the State Liquid Fuel Fund. This fund is governed by the State of Pennsylvania through PennDOT, which gives the township funds for road maintenance projects. There are some specific regulations that we have to follow for the use of those funds, but we typically use that for road, road maintenance projects. It's always a good thing when you can start a presentation like this by stating that there is no proposed tax increase for the, for 2021 in Euclid Township. This slide kind of gives residents the, the information as to how the millage rates for the various property taxes in the form of the Downingtown area school district, the Chester County, as well as Euclid Township. As you can see, you can barely see Euclid Township. It's the lower blue number there. We have held steady at point 12 for our property taxes for, I think this is the 35th year that they will be at that number. The county has held steady at 4.369 and the Downingtown area school district has held steady the last few years at 27.182. Now, I know what you may be wondering, what does that mean for my tax bill? So this year, we put together a slide that kind of breaks out just exactly what that means as far as your total tax, real estate tax bill. As you can see, we use an example property of $220,000. It's the median assessment for Euclid Township. Assessments are different than sale values for homes and they do tend to be a bit lower. As you can see here, the Downingtown area school district at their millage of 25.475 would be about $5,600 in property taxes or amount for about 85.6% of your total tax bill. Chester County's millage rate at 4.163 amounts for about $915 or 13.9% and Euclid Township at our point 12 accounts for about $26 or 0.39% of your total tax bill. I want to go over just our, our revenue funds for the budget this year. We are holding, the majority of the, the revenues funds are still coming from the earned income tax combined with the local services tax. We are looking at a projected revenue of $14,884,812. As you can see, broken out throughout the different funds, that's approximately 10.4 million in the General Fund, $140,000 in the hydrant fund, 3.7 million for the sewer fund. The capital improvement fund does not generate revenue and the State Liquid Fuel Fund is at about $565,000. And, and the chart below, you can see how that breaks out visually. The earned income tax obviously being the biggest piece of the pie. The sewer fee is also about 25%. Recycling and trash, we do anticipate no increase in the cost of recycling for the trash bill that the residents receive. That said, we have been watching the recycling rates increase over time and we're also monitoring any rise in the, at the Chester County landfill. Looking at expenditures, breaking it out between the five different funds. You can see here that we have the 2020 budget amount and also the 2021 budget amount as well as the percent increase or decrease. For 2021, we are looking at about a 1.3% increase in expenditures for the General Fund going from 10.3 million to about 10.46 million. Hydro fund is holding steady at 140,000. The sewer fund's actually decreasing slightly from about 3.66 million to 3.63 million. Now, the capital improvement fund, I know that 300% increase looks jumping, jumping out at the slide here. We have historically underfunded our capital improvement fund. Earlier this year, we did ask the board for a $250,000 transfer from our General Fund to help fund our capital projects. For next year, we are budgeting for $100,000 for a transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. And then finally, the State Liquid Fuel Fund, which to some extent is a little concerning is that it is down about 5.83% from 2020 at about $565,000. And as you can see, just like the revenues, we have a chart below that kind of breaks it out graphically. You can see that the Police Department's about 37% of that expenditures. Then we have the Sewer Department at 18% and Administration at 14% and, and so on and so forth. We are looking at our, our revenues being slightly more than our expenditures, so we will generate a, we will be able to maintain our current balance of about $4.5 million. The next few slides, I just kind of want to go through some of the specifics as to what's being allocated in these funds and what we're expecting as far as expenditures. For the sewer fund, the Township's aware that our Dara Treatment Plant contribution for 2021 will be about $970,000. This goes to the Dara Treatment System, which is different than Eagleview. This is a regional Downingtown Regional Treatment Facility. The Township is home to Eagleview Treatment, the Eagleview Treatment Facility, which is specific to our Township and also Upper Euclid. The costs of Eagleview are anticipated to be around $370,000. As you can see on the bottom of the slide, we are expecting some bigger expenses for next year for both Dara and Eagleview. We've been watching our, our commitment to the Clover Mill Pump Station and the expansion there as well as a, the Boot Road Force Main Project, which has been delayed quite a bit over the past few years, but we still plan for that to move forward. And the next item on the agenda, we actually do have a few projects for Eagleview Treatment Plant to try and bring that, the treatment plant back up to good standing, so. The Liquid Fuels Fund. So like I had said earlier, that did decrease a bit this year. The allocation from the state is actually $539,000 with a $26,000 revenue from the, the Turnback Program, which is, is funds that we get for assisting PennDOT in the maintenance of their roads. This brings us to a total of $565,000. Of these funds, we'll be setting $65,000 aside for snow removal. $200,000 will be set aside for our general road, roadway maintenance and we are projecting a $300,000 road resurfacing program for 2021, which as you can see at the bottom of the slide, $400,000 is being rolled over from 2020 because of the impact that COVID-19 had to our road resurfacing program for this year. As I had mentioned with the Hydrate Fund, the Township is home to 451 hydrants and as I mentioned that we assess properties that are within 600 feet of a hydrant to help offset the fee that Aqua charges as a standby fee. This did increase from 2019, in 2019, from $22 to $25.86. I'm not aware of an increase for this year, but it, it, it does increase over time. And then finally, our Capital Improvement Fund, like I had mentioned earlier, the board did authorize a $250,000 transfer from the General Fund earlier this year and we are budgeting for a $100,000 transfer for 2021. So just to go over some final conclusion points before any questions. We're not proposing a tax increase for 2021. The Township will continue to review our revenue sources and make suggestions, suggestions as needed. I mentioned that because we are cautiously watching some of our revenue sources that have slowly decreased over time, specifically the cable franchise fee. I'm guilty of it and I know many have cut their cord for their cable company and that does, does have an impact on the funds that we get through this program. It has steadily decreased since its peak in about 2017, so we are, we are monitoring that as well as our building permits and any impacts that COVID-19 could potentially have to our transfer tax, the, you know, earned income tax, et cetera. And then finally, the, we really hope to keep, continue to build on the budget process from this year and working towards a formalized goals and objectives process for our departments. I think everybody was really excited to be more involved in the budget this year and we're looking to build on that for 2021. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, this is just the presentation of the budget this evening. We will be posting the budget to the website. We'll also make links available on social media and it will be available as a physical hard copy in the Township Administration Building. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have Sue Bernhardt, who's our Finance Director here as well to help with, or assist with any questions that anyone may have.
So Scott, you, you mentioned that revenue from the cable franchise fee is decreasing. Is there any other areas and also the, the the Liquid Fuels Fund also? Are there any other areas that we should be concerned of declining revenue?
I definitely.
Possibility with, you know, with economic things with real estate.
Right. I, I would defer to Sue a little bit, but I mean, I would mention that the, the decline in the cable franchise fee is a little concerning. That does amount for a good, good chunk of money that has slowly been dwindling over the years. It's really hard to say just to what extent. I mean, I don't, we certainly don't expect it to increase over time. I think that the trend in internet-based cable is, is rising significantly. But we're also, like you said, Bill, concerned over building permits as those have slowly started to come down a little bit. And really with, I mean, with the COVID-19, COVID-19 pandemic, you know, just kind of monitoring our revenue sources because some of those can be greatly impacted by the, by just the smallest of change. Sue, is there anything that you want to add?
Uh, no, not really. I mean, I think you got everything. It's, you know, the big thing is the, the cable TV. Everything else is, can be completely, you know, volatile as far as what, you know, what the economy does. Building permits. You know, we can't really count on a lot. I mean, because it takes, sometimes it takes a while for a plan to go through. So we may be looking, oh, we're, we're going to get this next year, but it could be put off. So those are really, you know, revenues are very hard to predict, but you know, your expenditures are pretty fixed. So that's why, you know, the revenues are so important.
And to Sue's point, like obviously, we're going to be monitoring that and making suggestions for possible revenue increases where we, where we see that that could make a difference in the future.
Do we have, I know, we've talked about it and I know it's a, it's a long-term plan with this, the sewer extent, the main extension to the potentially hooking up to the Dara Facility from Eagleview. I don't think that the costs are coming primarily in this coming year, but when do you think those costs, or if we stay on the schedule we're, we're currently on, when do you think that we'll start realizing some of the additional expenses there?
For the, for the, you're talking about from Eagleview to the Dara? Okay. It's kind of hard to predict that. I mean, right now, the Eagleview Treatment Plan is performing just fine and next agenda item, I'll be asking for a bit award for quite a bit of money to keep it operating that way. But I would say that that's probably with, you know, a five to 10-year projection here and in the, I mean, unless something changes significantly that would, you know, expedite that process. We did submit the Act 537 Plan for that project to the DEP, so we're hoping to be, I mean, all along, that has been kind of a, almost an emergency fallback to some extent in the event that something did happen in Eagleview. So if we can get the Act 537 Plan, at least we'll have that first step completed. But as far as thinking budgetary, which I know is where you're trying to make, probably five to 10 years.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a way for the public to provide comments to us when they look at the budget?
Absolutely. You can, obviously, first and foremost, you could email myself or Sue Bernhardt. We'll make that contact information available when we post it. We're also exploring some potential other avenues for comment, similar to the public comment forum that we have for the board meetings.
Bill, is this, um, question period open to the public?
Well, I was gonna let the supervisors, if you and, uh, maybe are, are done, I think we can move into the public.
I don't have any questions, but I'm one of those people that wakes up at three in the morning and thinks, I should have asked that question.
Because if not, then I'll take our turn to see if there's any public comments or questions. Just to be clear, we're not voting on anything tonight, so. And if there's no comments or questions, this will be up in December, correct, Scott?
That is correct. Our December 14th meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott and Sue.
Yes, thank you very much and how much work you guys all put into it, really, and, and everyone in the Township, appreciate it.
A big thank you to Sue Bernhardt because she did a great job with this.
Okay, we'll move on to the Eagleview Treatment Plan Awards.
One second, I'm gonna switch quickly back to the agenda here. Okay, there we go. As, as mentioned in the budget presentation, there are some costs that we do foresee coming for the Eagleview Treatment Plant and one of those is for the PLC project at the Eagleview Treatment Plant, which will hopefully be kind of bringing the Eagleview Treatment Plant into the 21st century as, as far as some of the electronical components. What we're asking for this evening is Gannett Fleming has led the Township through, you know, a bid process for this project. And this evening, we have the two, the two contracts and the low bids for the contracts. The first contract was just Contract 1 for general construction. The apparent low bidder is Pikeland Construction, Inc., with a bid amount of $140,750. For Contract 2, which is the electrical portion of the bid, the apparent low bidder is MJF Electrical Contracting, Inc., with a bid amount of $454,000. I think what we're asking for is the staff has reviewed these bids. We've worked with Gannett Fleming on reviewing these bids as well and recommending that the board award these bids this evening.
Do we have any questions about the bids?
What was the second amount you said for MJF Electrical?
For MJF Electrical Contracting, the bid amount is $454,000.
I move that we accept the two bids as presented to us.
I'll second that.
Okay, if there's any comments or questions? Not all in favor? All right, motion passes. We'll move on to the resolutions. I'll note that the agenda has labeled them 2019-22 and 2019-23. There are obviously 2020-22 and 2020-23.
I'll take these. 2020-22 is the employee contributions to the Police Pension Fund, which per the contract, this is their fourth year of the contract and according to the contract, they will be paying a 3% contribution into the Police Pension Fund. So this is just a resolution to adopt that. And then 2020-23 is the administrative expenses from the Police Pension. Every year, we do an amount that's allocated to the Police Pension Fund for administrative costs that are paid for out of the General Fund. And we pay for them then out of the Police Pension Fund. So they're just administrative and, and.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolutions 2020-22 and 2023?
I move that we approve Resolutions 2020-22, the employee contribution to the Police Pension Fund and Resolution 2020-23, payment of the administrative expenses from the pension plan.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? All right, motion passes. I do want to stop. Mr. Baxter was able to type into the, the chat, the ambulance. For the month of October, there was 280 calls, the Euclid ambulance and year to date, it's 2,069 calls. Just that's the update from the ambulance. Moving to the Boas, Boas Vision Associates request for a one-year extension.
Oh, sorry. Yes, as you're aware, the Boas Vision had gotten approval for an addition on their building back in June of 2019. They've been here a few times for requests for extensions. The last one was previously approved to December 4th. So they're currently requesting an extension for an additional year until December 4th of 2021 due to the pandemic and they're still working with PennDOT for their highway occupancy permit. The request in this extension.
I'll, I'll make a motion to grant the extension to Boas Vision.
I'll, I'll make a motion to grant the extension to Boaz Vision Associates for one year to December 2021.
I second that motion.
Is there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Motion passes and we'll move to the Gray Farm request for extension.
Uh, yes, I received an email from Allison Zarro, who is representing Worthington Partners, who is the developer for the Gray Farm. They previously had an extension granted till November 30th. And are requesting an extension to January 31st, 2021. For the board to make any type of motion on the preliminary land development plan. They were just at the planning commission meeting on Thursday, last Thursday, to go over some of the environmental concerns that are on that property. So they're doing more testing and we'll be back in front of the planning commission at some point before January.
Do you have a motion to grant the extension till January 21st, 2021?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the extension for Gray Farm till January 31st, 2021.
We're extending the possibility for them to come back for a hearing, right?
Now, we're extending the request, the MPC requires a motion to be made on a plan once it's submitted for review. So they're requesting an extension for the board to make any sort of motion on the plan. While they're still working through some issues and going through the land development process.
I second the motion.
Is there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor? So motion passes. Move to the Rossi Track on 96 West Devon Drive, the preliminary land development plan submission.
So we received a preliminary land development plan for the Rossi Track, which is at 113 and Devon Drive. It's the 20 acre property where the golf range is. They're looking to construct three retail buildings and a restaurant. Which is a shopping center, which is a use permitted by conditional use. So they submit the plan. We're going to send it out for reviews and they'll come to the planning commission meeting in December to discuss.
Do we need to, do we need a motion to accept?
Yes.
Get a motion to accept the plan?
I make a motion that we accept the Rossi Track at 96 West Devon Drive, the preliminary land development plans.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Motion passes. And Tara, did you mention when that's going to be at the planning commission or did you say just in the future?
They will be at the December 2nd planning commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. Then moving to the preliminary final plan, land development plan approval for 205 Penny Packer Road.
Uh, yes, if you'll give me one second, I'll actually put the plan up on the screen. If I can. Okay, so this plan was recently at the planning commission meeting on Wednesday night. It's for a three lot subdivision. On an almost six acre parcel on the west side of Penny Packer Road. They're looking to construct three separate lots. Both require public water and sewer. The applicant is proposing to connect the public sewer into Penny Packer Road, which would ultimately be part of the Shmona trunk extension that we're working on, which is currently being reviewed by DEP for the Act 537. The applicant would install the sewer and then have a reimbursement agreement for anyone that wishes to connect to the public sewer after it's installed. They're also requesting a few waivers, one which requires them to widen the road approximately three feet. Being that the rest of Penny Packer Road is not widened right now. The township engineer also agreed that that would be fine for them to at least have that easement for future widening. One of the other waivers that they're requesting is the installation of a fire hydrant. They're currently waiting for a letter from Aqua to indicate the flow amounts to see if a fire hydrant would be feasible. So until they know from Aqua, they're requesting that waiver. And then they're also requesting a waiver from having to submit a fiscal impact study and paying a fee in lieu of doing that. They did receive a few review letters from EB Walsh, from Hydra Terra and Mike Holmes. And the planning commission made a motion to recommend this plan for approval.
And this is right across from the country, the Penny Packer.
Country Club.
Just, yes.
Eagle View is north on this plan.
And is there any concern from the township with the, the fire hydrant?
Not until we know what the flow rates are from Aqua. There, there are no other fire hydrants in the area. I did talk with Mike Holmes, who's also on here. If there's any concerns, we'll work with the homeowner.
And were there any concerns from area residents about this plan?
Not that we've heard, no.
Okay.
So what, what happens if the flow of water, is it strong enough for them to put a fire hydrant in?
We'll need to work with the homeowner and Aqua. They will be required to put in the fire hydrant prior to occupancy of, you know, the third property being developed. Or prior to the property being developed and occupied. Since it's a requirement, but for now they're requesting that waiver.
So it's essentially a temporary, a temporary waiver until they get approvals or the information from Aqua.
Correct.
There's a question in the chat box. Do we want to take that or?
So Laura Bensky has written, is our concern that these residents will be right down the hill from the pipeline bale station with no hydrant access? I think we've discussed that already. Laura, has your concern been addressed already or is? Do you have additional question about it?
I mean, ultimately the fire hydrant will have to go in.
Right, sounds like.
Before occupancy.
And there, there is fire hydrants currently up in Eagle View section as well that we could utilize.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the Reichenbach property at 205 Penny Packer Road for preliminary final land development.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Now we're moving on to the Hankin, Hankin Group's preliminary final land development plan submission and approval for 405 Eagle View Boulevard.
Yes, so the Hankin Group presented the plan to construct a 30 foot by 45 foot addition, which would become a boiler room at 405 Eagle View Boulevard. Which is known as Lot 10 in Eagle View. It will be required to do stormwater management for this project since the addition is over 400 square feet. Being that it's such a minor addition, the applicant is requesting a waiver in order to proceed as preliminary final. They did receive a review letter from EB Walsh. The planning commission made a motion to recommend at their Wednesday meeting also.
Any questions? So can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary final plan development for 405 Eagle View Boulevard Lot 10.
I second the motion.
Do you have any comments or questions? All in favor? Um, now we'll move to the hearing requests. The Hankin Group is requesting conditional use hearing for their proposed Eagle View Town Center 2.
Uh, yes, so at the previous planning commission meeting, Mr. Fisher presented a plan for a second town center, which would be right off Constitution Drive, which would actually extend Constitution to Pennsylvania, which they're looking to construct 364 apartments. That are proposed within 13 different buildings. As well as an office at the intersection of Eagle View and Constitution. There's also a clubhouse and some walking trails that are proposed. There are a handful of conditional use approvals that are required. So we're looking to schedule the hearing on December 14th, at the next supervisor's meeting.
So this is just permission to advertise?
It is.
Okay.
If you're okay with that date.
I am. Does, maybe Kim, do you? No questions? A motion to give permission to advertise for the December 14th conditional use hearing for Eagle View Town Center 2?
Sure, I'll make a motion to grant a conditional use hearing on December 14th for the Eagle View Town Center 2.
To advertise for the.
Yeah.
I second the motion.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, motion passes. Move to the Carefree Coach Rentals request for conditional use hearing for Development 247 Welsh Boulevard.
Yes, so we received an application from Alpha Scaldo, who's representing the applicant. They're an RV leasing company who's actually looking to occupy that last space in the same building where Max Out Fitness is going in. They were just in front of us. Max Out was just in front of you for conditionally is hearing for that. So they're looking to have a conditional use hearing for this RV leasing company. And we'd like to have that hearing on December 14th as well.
I can get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the request to advertise a conditional use hearing on December 14th for Carefree Coach Rentals at 247 Welsh Boulevard.
I second the motion.
All right, any comments or questions? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Moving to the Iron Hill Brewery request for liquor license transfer hearing.
Yes, so for the third time, we had previously had a liquor license transfer hearing that was approved in November of 2019. There were issues with that liquor license, so we did a second hearing for a liquor license transfer. The Liquor Control Board is now requiring another hearing for them to utilize a different liquor license. So we're looking to schedule the liquor license transfer hearing on November 30th at 7:00 PM. We're doing this early so that they can hopefully open up in December.
So this will be a special meeting?
It would be, yes.
Did they say where they're getting their liquor license from? Cause I know in November 2019, they just said they're getting it from another Iron Hill.
I think this one's coming from another Iron Hill as well.
Can I get a motion to approve? Permission to advertise?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the request to advertise for liquor license transfer hearing on November 30th at 7:00 PM for Iron Hill Brewery.
I second the motion.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Moving to the permission to advertise for the Human Relations Commission Anti-Discrimination Ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I can take this. This is an ordinance proposal that really supplements and works, is intended to work with the Pennsylvania Human Resources Commission. It sets out certain acts that are considered discriminatory and creates a township human relations commission. This township commission is not intended to be an adjudatory commission. It's not like the state one. The process that's being set up is if there is a discriminate, a complaint of discrimination, there can be a voluntary mediation if both sides are agreeable, try and work out their issues. If not, if it's an issue that's otherwise covered by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, they would be the ones to adjudicate it if it's something that falls out of something that the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission does. It would go to the court common pleas to adjudicate the issue.
So, and tonight we're just doing permission to advertise for the ordinance for discussion and approval at the next board supervisor's meeting, correct? Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
It's a.
For the November 30th meeting.
I make a motion that we give permission to advertise the Human Relations Commission slash Anti-Discrimination Ordinance for November 30th?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor? All right, motion passes. And the next one was the Pipeline Setback Ordinance. But we have, based on some additional comments that we have received, we are going to work on some of the improvements to the, to the proposed ordinance and bring it back at another time. Without move to the Sunoco update. And let me, give me one moment to bring that to my screen. So I'm just going to first, before anything else, run down the activities that are occurring in the township as I do every month. And give an update. So the for the construction of the Marineries 2 and 2X pipelines at the HCD 310 site, which is at Herman O. West Drive between Herman O. West Drive and Upper Youth Lane. They are approximately 8% complete, the complete for the final ream of the 20 inch pipe. Pull, pipe pullback at that section is scheduled for mid-January 2021. And the 16 inch pipe has already been completed at that site. So for the HCD Site 320, which is Herman O. West Drive, between Herman O. West Drive and Wharton Boulevard, all the 20 inch pipe and the 16 inch pipe work has been completed. And restoration work at Wharton Boulevard is, is nearly complete with tree planting scheduled to start on Wednesday of this week. At HCD Site 331, which is at the Derek Lane site, it's going to North Whitford Road. The 16 inch pipe has been installed. The 20 inch pipe final ream is anticipated to be completed by Wednesday, November 11th. With pullback starting as early as Thursday, November 12th, but this is subject to change pending weather or other issues. At the HCD Site 350, which is between North Whitford Road and Devon Drive, both the 16 inch and 20 inch pipe work is complete. And restoration work will be scheduled when the HCD 331, which which is the Dairy Queen and North Whitford Road site, and the HCD 360, which is Devon Drive down to Schoen Road. That's when those are complete restoration work will begin. And finally, the HCD Site 360, Devon Drive in Youth Lane to Schoen Road, which is in West White Lane, the 16-inch pipe is complete. And the 20-inch pipe work has not been, is still waiting on some DEP approvals right now. The... So that is the updates on the Marineries work. Is there any legal issues that need to be updated?
Yeah, just related to the Marsh Creek incident, there was an appeal brought by Sunoco to the Environmental Hearing Board regarding the DEP's order that the pipeline in that area be moved. Sunoco sought a, what they call supersidious, which is essentially the equivalent of a preliminary injunction. And there was a hearing in front of the Environmental Hearing Board. I do not know what, I do not believe there is a result. And if there is, I don't know what the result of that hearing is at this point.
Thank you. Is there any question?
Well, I was just going to say, since the time change now on our noise ordinance specifies half an hour past sunset, just so residents are aware that construction will be stopping earlier now that the sun goes down so early. So if there's any problems, they can contact the township.
With that, is there any other questions or comments specific to Sunoco activities? We'll do general questions in a minute. If not, we'll move to the announcements. So I'll run down the list. On November 11th, we'll have a special meeting of Board of Supervisors to present the comprehensive plan hearing, which is going to be at 7:00 PM. On November 12th, the Historical Commission will meet at 7:30 PM. On November 18th, the Environmental Advisory Council will meet at 6:30 PM. The agenda says November 19th, but it's November 18th. The zoning hearing board will meet at 7:00 PM to discuss the properties listed below. On, as we noted today, I'll add this just verbally, we have a conditional use hearing on November 30th, or hearings on November 30th to discuss the Iron Hill liquor license transfer, the Anti-Discrimination Ordinance, as well as a conditional use here, a decision for Audubon at the site next to the turnpike. On December 2nd, the Planning Commission will have their meeting at 7:00 PM. And then on December 14th will be the next Board of Supervisors meeting at 7:30 PM. All meetings will be held virtually via Zoom link that you can find on the township website.
And all meetings, all meetings are open to the public. You do not have to be a member on the committee or commission in order to attend.
With that, I'll open it to any public questions or comments.
Good evening. Hi there. Hi, I'm Peg McCory.
Say your name when you speak.
Yeah, sure. Hi, Peg McCory, 901 Welsh Shares Way. I just have a quick question regarding the Reichenbach land development plan on Penny Packer. I know that the township had surveyed the Welsh Shares Homeowners Association property down there. And I don't know if it was for the sewer line for this or was it the sewer line that Mr. Greenlee had talked about previously attaching to the Eagleview? Do you know?
The township wouldn't have surveyed for the homeowner who is doing the subdivision.
If the township had surveyed, it was more than likely for the DARE extension from the Eagleview Treatment Plant. But if you'd like, I can definitely get my hands on a plan and get that over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll bug you about that. Thank you, Mr. Greenlee.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Last chance.
The residents can unmute themselves if they want to speak, right?
Yeah. Okay, if there's no other comments, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Kim.
Make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it.